Planning Commission meeting for July 7, 2022. At this time, I will ask that you, if you're not already standing, stand and we'll have a prayer and invocation. Pledge of allegiance. Father, we're so thankful to you for the day and for the blessings you've given us. Father, we thank you for this great county we live in. We appreciate our, our, our political leaders. Father, we thank you for our first responders. We thank you for our staff that has prepared for this meeting tonight. We thank you that they, all of these make us a great county for us to live in. Now, Father, we just pray that you'll be with us and help us to conduct ourselves in a way that honors you and shows respect to each other. We pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for This time, I'm going to call the roll. Daniel Nance, Brandon Bias, Robert Davis, Plummer Tonsmire, Jason Paget.
Here.
Michael Mullik.
Here.
Greg Seibert.
Here.
Bill Boyer.
Here.
Jamie Stradger. Okay, we have a quorum. At this time, I will ask the planning commission, you have received a copy of the work session minutes and the meeting minutes for June the 2nd. Are there any corrections? And if not, entertain a motion that these be approved.
I'll make a motion that we approve the work session and the meeting minutes for June 2nd.
Okay, Mr. Mullik's made a motion for the minutes be approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Bill's made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, folks, as you can tell, we have a crowded room tonight and we're having to make some logistical changes, so I'm going to apologize up front. We are going to move some things around and so that I don't take the time to explain it, you're just going to have to let us run it this way so that we can get as much done as possible on timely manner. So this is going to affect many of you. One of our first items is the Guff Coast Farm property. We're going to move that along with the Sherwood Grove project to the back of the agenda. And I know that affects many of you because that's probably what the majority of you are here for. So, we're going to take a lot of these other items because they'll move quickly. And so, if you want to step outside, you're welcome to stay in here and stand, but if you want to go out and come back, we'll announce when that project's coming back up or that item on the agenda and let you know so that you can get back in here. So let me give some instructions first, just on how we will do this. In case you're not familiar with our process, I will introduce our item that we'll be discussing and open a public hearing. We will have our staff come up and present it, and then we will have questions and answers with them. We will then allow the applicant to come up and speak to it. And then we will, I will be given the sign-up sheets that you should have filled out up front. If you didn't, you might want to go back out there and do that. If you would like to speak, she'll bring those to me and I will call your name. And each one of you will be able to come up and speak. I am going to ask when you come up, because as you can tell, there are many here and we have quite a few items on the agenda, so we're going to try to limit your time to three minutes. So, say what you need to say, and I would just say to shorten your time, if somebody else has already said what your concern is, don't repeat that so that we can move through and hear all the comments. And, and we'll chew that as quick as we can. Turn off your phones or mute those phones, if you will, so those won't interrupt us. But, I will reach a point where I will close the public hearing on each item. In other words, I will make sure everybody's had a chance to speak on the item, but when no one else chooses to speak at that time, and it won't be repeats, when, when everybody's had their one chance to speak, we will close the public hearing. No one will be able to come back up and speak at that time. So I hope I'm clear on those things. If I'm not, I apologize. We'll, we'll try to take care of the other things as we go. So we have quite a few items to go through and we're going to start at this time with case number SC-22-22, Robert White, and also SV-22-7, the variance. Does anybody need to, on the planning commission, need to declare any prior communication on this item? Okay.
So we'll begin with Robert White Road. This is a five-lot subdivision and staff is recommending approval with conditions, which I will discuss shortly. This is a five-lot subdivision ranging from 3.3 acres to 5.8, so all fairly large. There's no traffic study because there are fewer than 50 lots. Drainage and wetlands I will discuss in a moment, and there are no new streets. This is an overview of the entire plat. This shows the vicinity map, so you can see it's just southeast of I-65. It is in Planning District 6, which is unzoned. This shows the general aerial view. You can see quite a lot of woodlands up in this area. Because this is, these are fairly large and there's a remnant lot to the east, they are allowed by statute five point, or section 4.5.8 to show wetlands as a, to show a 50-foot buffer rather than actually delineating it. And so you can see that here in the, the pink, um, let's see, there we go. So there's a 50-foot wetland building setback. And there's a notation that any future subdivision or developments of lots will comply with wetland requirements. So if they were to further subdivide that into smaller lots, then they would have it delineated in the traditional manner. As for drainage, there are no improvements recommended. Again, this is a fairly large wooded area. Everything slopes to the east and you can see the arrows indicating the drainage. No improvements, the current drainage pattern will remain and no improvements there. So, the staff report actually has two recommendations. One is for the subdivision and the second is for the variance. I'm going to start with the variance. They're requesting exclusion of 99 acres, and this is consistent with section 8.11. This is considered a remnant parcel because it's over 20 acres. And a condition of approval will be required, a note on the plat to reflect the wording required by section 8.11. And basically, it just says that this will not be included as the part subdivision. A variance request to exclude it has the date, tonight's meeting date, if it's approved. This is what the remnant parcel looks like, so it's 99 acres, the section in red. And this is the, the necessary note already on there with the date if it is approved. So the staff recommends exclusion of that 99 acres, that that be approved, and a condition of approval be to require the note, and the second condition will be cross-referencing the variance request in the subdivision recommendation. And this is the second recommendation for the subdivision. We recommend that be approved, subject to compliance with Ballman County subdivision regulations, and the following condition, approval of the variance request, SV-22-7 to exclude the 99 acres. So, those two are contingent one on the other. And so that is it.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone on the planning commission have questions for staff? Okay, thank, thank you. I have Jason Linder signed up to speak.
Good afternoon, commission. I'm Jason Linder. I am the surveyor of record for this project, here to entertain any questions that you may have concerning this project.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for the applicant representative here? Okay, thank God.
Thank you all.
All right, I had no one else sign up. Is there someone that forgot to sign up by chance? All right, if not, then I'm going to close the public hearing, entertain a motion from planning commission. And let's take the variance first.
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance for the remnant parcel of 99.538.
Okay, that's the SV-22-7?
Yes.
Okay, so Michael Mullik's made a motion to approve the variance. Have a second?
Second.
Seibert, second the motion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion's approved. Now entertain a motion on the subdivision for SV-22-7. Move its approval. All right, Mr. Boyer's made a motion that we approve, SV-22-7. Have a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Seibert, second the motion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion is approved. All right, this time, we're going to open a public hearing then for case number SC-22-27 and SV-22-11. Does anybody need to declare any prior communication on this item? Okay, it's all yours.
All right, I'll try to slow down a little bit this time, because my first one, I was a little nervous. So this is a preliminary plat for an eight-lot subdivision, and again, staff recommends approval with conditions. This is zoned RA and it's in Planning District 12. The lot sizes are all listed here and all very large, all over 20 acres, so this qualifies as what we call a large lot subdivision. Again, traffic study is not required because there are fewer than 50. Drainage improvements are not required due to the large lot subdivision request, and again, wetlands we discuss later, and no new streets. This is the overall plat. And this is the vicinity map, so you can see this is just south of Sticks River and just north of County Road 64. Aerial view, zoning, it's in District, Planing District 12, and zoned again, as I said, RA, residential agricultural. This is, they're using the same 50-foot wetland setback, and that's based on the generalized wetland map. And that again is indicated in the pink, and also has the same note that if it is further subdivided, that at that time, they will comply with wetland requirements. Here are the lots numbered, just to help visualize where they are. They have the area marked in red on this one. They've requested for exclusion. This is a one-time split. It's 27 acres. They don't have an instrument number on that yet. They're still waiting for it to close, but they will get that as soon as possible. Again, this has two recommendations, one for the subdivision and the second for the variance. So, they're asking to exclude 220 acres. And again, this is a remnant parcel because it's more than 20 acres. And the condition of approval will be the wording on the plat required by 8.11. And this again is that same wording, that this is a remnant parcel and has the date of tonight's meeting. And these areas to be excluded are indicated in red, areas A, B, and C, and they're all quite large. And here is a close-up of one of those notes, again, already on there. So staff recommends the exclusion of the 222 acres be approved. Conditions of approval, that requires the note in section 8.11, and a second condition is that it will be included in the subdivision recommendation, cross-referencing the variance request. And then for the subdivision recommendation, staff again recommends that the preliminary plat be approved, subject to compliance with Ballman County subdivision regulations, and approval of variance request, SV-22-11.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay, no questions, thank you. Jason, did you need to come back up and speak to this, same situation? Anybody have any questions for the applicant's representative? Okay. All right, anyone that would like to speak to this item that didn't sign up? Okay. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion for, we'll start again with the variance, the SV-22-11.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for the variance for the remnant parcel on SC-22-27.
11.
11.
Okay. Mr. Mullik's made a motion to approve. Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Paget, second the motion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we'll take the subdivision, SC-22-27.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 10-lot subdivision for Persimmon Creek Estates, phase two, subject conditions of the wording for staff.
Okay. Mr. Mullik's made the motion to approve, SC-22-27. Have a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Seibert, second the motion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion's approved. All right, we're going to move to our zoning cases. We're going to go to circle K. This will be the CSP-22-2. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody need to declare any prior communication on this item? Okay, Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Commissioners, I'll try to go kind of fast through this out of respect for time in our audience here tonight. Quite a few slides here, and the purpose of that was to make certain you had a very detailed staff report. So if I go too quickly, we can always fall back and go a little more slowly to more explain, to explain something. You see your aerial image of your site project right there. This is a commission site plan required by the Ballman County Planning, the Ballman County zoning ordinance. And as you notice right there, this is the intersection of County Road 64 and State Route 101, 181, which is in the Bell Force community. We have some additional information there on the subdivision in which this is located. We can discuss that if it becomes relevant. Commissioners, I won't go through in super detail on your development information right here. This is the basic site information that you're accustomed to seeing, that we do both on subdivisions or other types of developments. But I will point out that this is in the planning jurisdiction of the city of Daphne. It is in Planning District 15. However, the city does not review site plans outside their city limits. Your developer and your various consultants are shown on this page right here, 1.94 acres. This will be a single-unit, single-tenant convenience store building. And here, we just simply show you that it's in Planning District 15, as well as where it is in relation to the city of Daphne. You can see they have annexed them right of way. This here is your zoning map, and we can return to this and answer questions if we need to. You see the zoning classifications on subject property and around it. We have a closer aerial image of the site as it exists, as it exists today. This is just the subdivision plat, so this store will go on, should it be approved, it will go on lot 1A of the subdivision you see referenced right here. Here, we're just simply zooming in on the site for clarity. These are some photos of the existing site as you see right now, and we notice, we've noted each of the properties that you're seeing in these photos. Commissioners, I won't go through this in great detail, but this is just to show you that, this is where we vet the compatibility in a commission site plan, so that you see the various criteria right there. What's on the left is what is required by the zoning ordinance. What on the right is the staff recommendations or the staff comments that you would have seen in your staff report. We can return to this if we need to, but I did illuminate some of the compatibility. We can return to this if we need to, but I did illuminate some of the compatibility analysis. We can return to this if we need to. Again, the second page, again, the requirements on the left, the staff comments on the right. And again, we can return to these if we need to, to answer questions in greater detail. These are the elevations, the exterior elevations of the proposed building. Here is a floor plan of the proposed building. And Commissioners, we did have, because the existing site is an old store, and there's the possibility there were underground storage tanks on the site, the developer did conduct a phase-one environmental, a phase-one environmental. They did not detect any underground storage tanks or USTs. They also did a geotechnical, which would have had soil borings, but this is related to the condition of approval that we'll get to here in just a moment. And here, we just note that there were no evidence of USTs, underground storage tanks, or ASTs, above-ground storage tanks, at the time they did that. However, we're concerned about when they demolish the building, should this application get approved, and we'll deal with that here shortly. And so here, we're just explaining that there will be some conditions of approval when we get to the condition of approval slide, when we get to the recommendation slide. Here, we have for you, Commissioners, this is the cover page. Now, Kim Lee Horn is the engineer of record. They're also the landscape architect of record, the other consultants you see right here. I believe Kim Lee Horn was not able to be here tonight, Commissioners, but they did speak to me yesterday to confirm that, and I told them that I would do the best job I could in presenting this to the planning commission. And so you see the consultants listed, as well as the utility providers. Here is the actual site plan. And what we're showing here, and what you see in these animations, Commissioners, is just to verify that, one, we checked it against the criteria for required number of parking spots, which they are complying with, actually exceeding. They're also complying with, as you see right here in the animations, the turnaround space and unloading area, they're complying with that. We thank Wheezy Jeffords for reviewing the drainage system, erosion and sediment control plan, and the traffic study was supplied by this, not required by this type of application, but one was furnished, which we'll explain momentarily. So we thank Wheezy for her assistance. We do have a County Road 64 turnout permit already, and then we are awaiting an ALDOT review of off-site improvements. This is just an excerpt of Wheezy's review. And so we will also have conditions of approval related to the ADM permit and any turnout or right-of-way permits required by ALDOT. And this is just simply one of the drawings in that package, and we thank Wheezy for her review. Commissioners, the traffic study is not required for this component, but many times, a turnout permit will trigger one. And so for, I guess for schematic purposes, the applicant pre-natured just a copy of this, and you can see it was prepared by Neil Schaefer. And so there are off-site improvements that will require turnout permits from 181 and on Highway 181. We'll show that to you here momentarily. We do have an email from Michael Smith with ALDOT where he's saying that they conceptually approve it. We don't have the actual approval yet. Neil Schaefer's recommendation is what you see on the right. These are the actual improvement plans for the off-site. So what you're considering today is the site containing the store itself, but for clarity and transparency, we wanted to make certain that we show there are additional improvements that will be required to bring access to this site from Highway 181. And so we just simply label those areas right here. The truck routing plan is just illuminating, again, that there are off-site improvements. And again, the erosion control plan was reviewed by Baldwin County Highway Department. Okay. Landscaping, Commissioners, this is a critical function of the commission site plan review process. And what we're trying to show here is, first of all, here is the plant schedule. They actually revised the plant schedule to comply with planning requirements of the zoning ordinance. And then what you see, the green areas are buffers required because both of those roads, both County Road 64 and State Route 181, are arterials. And so therefore, that requires the 10-foot-wide buffer you see in green. And then we'll show you an area for a future sidewalk, and the reason that's important is because that is a condition of approval. The 20-foot-wide buff, 25-foot-wide buffers are required because that property still adjoins a residential use. So what we're showing here is that they're complying with that requirement. You'll notice that, we'll explain in just a moment, there's a condition of approval because we're having to reserve an area for a future sidewalk for a potential future project that would require a future sidewalk along County Road 64. Furthermore, Commissioners, there are four trees we are asking for a condition of approval to not require because we need to make certain there's no conflict for that future sidewalk. And we described them there in green. These are the trees that are being removed, and so therefore, the tree count has to be replaced. You remove a tree, you replace a tree, as required by the zoning ordinance. However, to give the clearance for the sidewalk means we will ask for a condition of approval to reduce that number of trees by four. And so we just simply explain this here in detail. This was in your staff report. This is the explanation on the number of trees required versus what is proposed. And again, we're just showing, for transparency purposes, the plant schedule of what was proposed. This is what they originally proposed, which would comply with the tree removal requested. This is what we're asking for via condition of approval to give clearance for the sidewalk. So Chairman Commissioners, the staff recommendation is recommend approval. The five conditions that you see right there, I'll just summarize, are, one, dealing with the ADM, an ADM permit for the new USTs that will be installed on the site. Condition of approval is they will furnish that before we give them the CSP. If existing USTs are discovered on Lot 1, that the CSP will be temporarily suspended until, if there is a UST found, it can be remediated. We want a copy of the National Blue Dirt Discharge Elimination System permit from ADM, which is their ADM stormwater permit. Then all turnout and right-of-way permits from ALDOT. And then, as we mentioned earlier, non-inclusion of four replacement trees along County Road 64 to allow clearance for a future sidewalk that may be required. Plan Commissioners, my apologies for going so fast. I'm happy to go back and explain anything in greater detail, and I'm happy to answer questions on behalf of staff.
Thank you, Mr. King. I have a question, going back to the access to the site. To me, ingress, egress to the site, in my opinion, is the most crucial of this whole project, meaning the location of two major roadways. That slide right there, that road, that portion of roadway that's off-site, do they own that property?
Commissioners, I am, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I am not privy to that information. I'm not privy to that information, but we did feel it was imprudent to share that.
But it's not your recommendation that that has to be built for this project to be done?
Yes, sir. So what we're asking for is the actual turnout permits from ALDOT to construct those improvements, be conditional before we, as staff, issue the CSP, so that way we know, so that way we know those improvements will get installed. And Chairman, I see Mr. Larry Smith is with us here today, so they are one of the subconsultants on the project, so Mr. Smith may also want to address the commission as well, if I misspeak on anything.
I'm more interested in not the turnout itself, but the access from that turnout back to the site. That's obviously on, either on somebody else's property, that obviously an easement has to be established on, or they own the property or will own it. That's what I want to get information on.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can interject, on that slide, they do label a 24, 25-foot access easement there. It's a little bit difficult to see. And so certainly, our approval will be conditioned on that actually existing in final form.
And is the, I'm going to ask one more question, some of the others may have one, but the access to 64, is that a right-in and right-out only? Or is it, does it allow a left turn back to the east?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to try to find the best drawing for that here while we are here. If you can forgive me just a moment here to try to give you the best drawing possible, let me go back here to our basic site plan. Nothing like live television, Commissioners. All right. So what I'm going to do, forgive me here, Commissioners, let me go into here. Okay. Let me give this to you in a clean, let me give this to you clean. So as shown here on the site plan, you'll see it appears that a right-in and a right-out is possible. This, as shown here, I do not see any turning movement restrictions that would try to prohibit someone from trying to make a left turn here. However, they would probably, probably in most situations, not make that left turn. Now, what I will, what I will remind the commission about is we do have, we do have the turnout permit for Baldwin County Highway Department for that turnout onto County Road 64. That is in place. So if they have a requirement that is above and beyond what you see here, obviously, they would have to install what's illuminated in their permit.
Okay. Any other questions on the planning commission for staff? Okay. Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you, sir.
I have one person signed up, Taylor Chanel.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me just a second, let me find the basic site plan and have it here on screen while we're answering questions from citizens. And then I will get out of the way.
Hi. I'm Taylor Chanel. I'm here representing Kim Lee Horn. I'm not with the engineer of record. I'm not the PM, they're not able to make it, but if anybody has questions, then I should be able to help address those.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for representative? Okay. Did you want to speak?
Sure. I'm with the developers. We've been working on this project for quite a while. There is no left turn on County Road 64, just so you're aware, and I believe, sorry, Matthew, right? Sorry about that. Had pointed out, we do have easements in place for the improvements, off-site improvements for the access. We've been coordinating with DOT, done all the traffic studies and whatnot. Right now, we're working on finalizing those permits. We've got a couple of conditions that we're in the process of satisfying, but all in all, I think it'll be a good project. It's definitely an extremely busy intersection, and we've done our homework as far as the different traffic studies and whatnot are required. And I think we've done a good job of involving DOT, both from the county and from the state throughout the entire process. They've been very helpful in making sure that all our i's were dotted and t's were crossed. And we look forward to wrapping it up and building the project.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's all I had signed up. Is there anyone from the public that didn't sign up that wished to speak? Okay. Mr. King, you have any closing comments?
And Mr. Chairman, let me thank Matthew for, that was a great catch. You may not be able to see that easement that is referenced on this drawing right here, but I'll label it for you right here, 24-foot-wide or 25-foot-wide future access easement. So that is memorialized on this drawing, but this is not the site plan you're considering. This is supplemental information. So what I would ask, Mr. Chairman, if it's the pleasure of the planning commission to do so, would be to add that as an additional sixth condition of approval, that we're furnished with, that we're furnished with verification that that easement will be carried out.
Okay.
Okay. And I have a question, Buford, for the four trees that we're not going to put along 64 because of the future sidewalk, is there anywhere else on site to put four trees? There may not be space. That's a two-acre lot.
And Chairman Commissioners, that's a fantastic question. And I think under the circumstances, because the zoning ordinance allows them to remove trees, to install improvements, the great majority of this site is covered with improvements. And because this is a request from staff, I humbly ask the planning commission to approve it with that type of condition. And Mr. Tyler Mitchell is with us here today with the Baldwin County Highway Department. And so Tyler, correct me if I misstate this. We believe there will be a potential future project where there may be some federal dollars involved that may mandate a future sidewalk in that area, so we wanted to make absolutely certain there was space for it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right. So Mr. King has given us the recommendation for approval, these five conditions with the sixth one added for the easement. So I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of this project with the addition of the six conditions as stated by staff.
Okay. Mr. Buller's made a motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mulitz made, second the motion. Any questions, comments?
And Chairman, that does include the sixth, just to illuminate, that does include the sixth condition we asked for verbally.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, we'll be opening a public hearing for case number CSP 22-14, Shu Knight property. Ms. Boykin? Oh. Does anybody need to declare any prior communication on this item? All yours.
All right. This is a request for commission site plan approval in the Foley area. The subject property is located in Planning District 30 and is currently zoned RMF 6. The current use is agricultural. The total acreage of the parcel is 25 acres, but the applicant is only asking for site plan approval for 9.8. The applicant is asking for approval of a storage facility, which would also store boats and RVs. This application did come in front of the board in November of 2020. It was approved, but the applicant had ran out of time to get his building permit, so he has to come back and ask for approval again. Here on the locator map, you can see the 9-point acres that's highlighted in blue. To the north is the city of Foley. To the west and south, it is zoned RMF 6. And to the east is also in the city of Foley and is zoned residential. Here's a picture of the subject property. And here's a picture of some of the adjacent properties. There's a church and some subdivisions and some vacant land. Here is their site plan, and to the right is their site data. They'll have four, six parking spaces. They'll have a total of 10 storage units with two storage units for boats and RVs. This is the office elevation. This is what they plan on the facade and the elevation of the building they will have that will be out front. Here's their landscape plan. They will have a 10-foot landscape buffer along County Road 12 South. And then surrounding the property on the west, east, and south side, they will have a 30-foot landscape buffer. This is their drainage and grading plan. They have received their turnout permit. They submitted that with their application, and that was through the city of Foley. The applicant is requesting commission site plan approval to allow for a storage facility known as Harbor Lighthouse Recreational Storage. The facility will be located on 9-point acres of the 25, and it will be within the RMF 6 zoning. They will have 10 storage buildings and two other storage buildings that will have boats and RVs. This application was approved by the planning commission in November of 2020, but the applicant was unable to obtain his building permit within the six months. That was conditioned with the original approval. These two highlighted areas are the reasons they have to get commission site plan approval. They have over 5,000 square feet of buildings, and they're also adjacent to residential property. As stated previously, they're only asking for 9.8 acres for the commission site plan approval, which would have 10 storage buildings and then two other storage areas for buildings and, I mean, excuse me, for boats and RVs. Staff has recommended approval with the following conditions. All of them are the same from the previous time, except for the last one. We are still waiting to receive their stormwater plan approval from the highway department.
Thank you, Ms. Boykin. Any questions for staff?
I have one on, I guess it's, what is it, County Road 64?
Mr. Mulitz, if I could get you to turn on your microphone, pull that down a little bit. Thank you, sir.
On the landscape buffers, each boundary is 30 feet wide, except for what's along 12, and that's 10?
That's correct. That's what our zoning ordinance requires.
No detention ponds or anything required on a site with this much rooftop? Or I might have missed it. Okay.
Yeah.
I see. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
One quick question, and maybe this is just me looking at the landscape plan. Assuming that you're going to put RVs or boats in each of these storage units, it looks to me like that the landscaping does not provide an opening to be able to get vehicles into these storage units.
It's going to be a mixture of mini storage and boats and RVs.
But how do they get them into the storage units, is my question, given the landscape plan that's all the way around the building?
The applicant might be able to answer this question better, but I believe the boat and RV storage would be in the center too. Now, they'll probably drive through, I would think, but we could get the applicant to answer that question.
Yeah, so the middle buildings are drive-throughs, and the buildings on the outer side, you pull them from the front. The bays will come up and you pull them from the front side, not the tree side.
My point is that according to your landscape plan, you have landscaping all the way around the whole project. And to be able to drive the drive-through or to the individuals, it looks like you're going to be running over the petunias.
Bill, I think it's the interior roadway.
Come in, this is all travel. Right here, you drive, they drive in, park, pull into the bay, that helps. This is where they drive around. This is the building, and this is gravel road, big gravel.
By the way, can you give us your name so that we'll have?
Paul Shu-Night.
Okay. You don't need to go anywhere. I got you on the list as next anyway, so just in case there. Does anybody have any other questions for staff? All right, Mr. Shu-Night, you're right there, so I'll just let you come on up and... Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you. I just want to introduce my family, my son, Paul Shu-Night III, and my daughter, Michaela. My wife is not here yet. She got cut off at work. So I do want to apologize for having to come back again. I appreciate the approval in 2020. As you know, the county is booming and trying to get a surveyor out and get him his work done to the engineer, and the engineer's got work stacked on top of him. And I'm a little guy, so I got pushed to the back. But we finally got it. Went to the county earlier this year in March to try to do something like the fencing, and that's when I found out the project had expired, and we had to start all over again. History about the property, I've spent in the family since the 60s. Farmed over 200 acres there over the years, whittled down to 25 acres, which I have. And it's getting very costly to maintain 25 acres with fuel prices today. We've been talking about it for years since 2010. We finally got the ball rolling about three or so years ago. Learned a lot about the process to get us where we are today. And the reason why we're doing this is everything's turning into subdivisions. And I have realtors sending me letters, was once a year, now I have developers calling me every other month now because they like that RMF 6 zoning for some reason. We do not want to sell the property. It's family property. We want to keep it in the family. But maintaining 25 acres is getting very costly, like I said. So the idea of the storage complex came up to us when neighbors actually came to us asking to store some RVs and boats over there because they can't keep them in those subdivisions, and that's how the idea actually came about. If we keep it like it is, it's going to cost us money. If we do the business, we can make some money, improve the property, make it look nice, and keep it in the family. If we don't, then we're selling it. It's going to be a subdivision or apartment complex. And we had a great meeting last night with the neighbors across from us, and they understand our situation. I don't know if anyone's here tonight or not, but they feel better about why we're doing what we're doing. Originally, it was four and a half acres that we was wanting to do. We did have to expand it to the 9.8 because of the learning process and the restrictions and stuff that I had no clue about. And to maintain the county's requirements with the 30-foot buffers on the side and everything, that took up a lot more real estate. So way back then, we talked to staff about, well, we'll expand it a little bit. I'm going to be honest with you, if this thing gets halfway through and it's doing what we want to do, we may say, hey, that's it, we're going to stop right there. The goal was to make money, to support the property, and not cost us money. And make a little money, obviously. That's what everybody wants to do.
And Mr. Chairman, out of respect for the very controversial cases we have later on on the agenda, it might be good at this point to kind of wrap up these comments.
Mr. Shu- Sure, I'm wrapping up right now. I know there's a concern maybe about the 10-foot buffer in the front. That's what the county requires. There is, there's going to be more than that. I'm going to have a 11-foot between my property line and before the fence begins. And then beyond that's going to be the required trees. So it's going to be a lot more than the 10. Just to clear that up.
Thanks, sir. I do have one more signed up. Rick?
I have one question for the applicant. On page 136, where it talks about the office elevation, for office duties or for employees or whoever's going to be in there, should there, is there parking?
There is required parking. There's six lots up front, six parking lots up front. That's required by the county.
Okay. All right. Nope, okay. All right. Any other questions for?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any questions for staff? Ms. Boykin, do you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve CSP 22-14, the Shu-Night property, the commission site approval.
Subject to conditions?
Subject to conditions is staff.
Okay. Mr. Mullick's made the motion to approve subject to conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Page, second it. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. This time, we'll open a public hearing for case number Z 22-11, Ingersoll property. Does anyone on the planning commission need to clear any prior communication on this item? Okay, Ms. Bates, it's all yours.
All right. This is a rezone of an acre and a half from RSF 1 to RSF 2. The subject property is in Planning District 30. It's located on Geno Road on the east side. The address is 4848 Geno Road. Here is the locator map showing the parcel. And the property to the north and to the south is in the city limits of Guff Shores. And the site map. Here are the property images, the subject property, the adjoining property to the south, the property, another picture of the property to the south, and then the adjoining property to the north. And we have another picture of the adjoining property to the north and the property across the street. Here are the current zoning requirements for RSF 1. The minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet. The proposed zoning requirements with the minimum lot size highlighted are 15,000 square feet. Here is a current site plan showing both residents and the delineated wetlands on the front of the property near Cotton Creek. Here's the proposed site plan on what they're trying to do if they are able to get the rezone. They're wanting to subdivide the front part or the rear part on the Geno roadside to 160 by 110, which is 17,600 square foot lot. So they can demo the existing house and build a new house. The current zoning is RSF 1. The minimum lot area is 30,000 square feet. They're asking to have it rezoned to an RSF 2, so they can have a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. The properties to the north and south are zoned R14, which is residential, single-family, and the city limits of Guff Shores, and their minimum lot area is 11,000 square feet. Here is the map when Planning District 30 became zoned. It was adopted February 21st, 1995. You can see the original zoning, and at that time, it was zoned residential, single-family 1. And the picture over to the right, which is the purple, you can see a significant amount of annexation and division since 1995. Staff is unaware of any planned public improvements. The property already has two dwellings on the parcel. One dwelling is just going to be demoed and rebuilt, and they're wanting to divide the parcel. Staff believes that the proposed amendment is consistent with the development patterns based on the significant amount of more dense lots created in the area. And the properties to the north and south, that's already zone R14. The subject property has wetlands on the front, on the water side, but the new structures are going to be located on the rear, so it's not going to have any interference with the wetlands. And as I stated previously, the subject property is currently zoned RSF 1, and is currently used as residential. The property adjoins the parcels to the north and the south are already in the city limits of Guff Shores. The current zonings are 14. The adjoining properties are residential. Their request zoning is RSF 2. According to the submitted information, the proposed use is to request for a family division. If the property is rezoned, the proposed uses will require an exemption from the planning department as well as a site plan approval for any structures built or demos on the property. Unless information to the contrary is revealed at the public hearing, staff feels that the recommendation of approval is appropriate, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Anybody have any questions for staff? Thank you, ma'am. I have one person signed up, Brandy Ingersoll. Okay, anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Anybody need to speak to this, didn't sign up? Closing the public hearing on this item. Entertain a motion. And remember, this is a recommendation to the county commission.
I make a motion that we recommend county commission for approval of the Ingersoll property request for rezoning this property from RSF 1 to RSF 2.
Okay. Mr. Mullick's made a motion to recommend approval.
Seconded.
To county commission.
Seconded.
I've just seconded the motion. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion approved. All right, at this time, we're going to open a public hearing for case number Z 22-12, Amati property. Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Ms. Bonner?
Good evening. Where am I going? Where did it go? Okay, thank you. Okay. This evening, we have a request for a rezoning from B 2 to RSF 1. The property is located on the Fort Morgan Peninsula, on south of 180 in McWilliams. And in your staff report, you can see that this is the only parcel in that area that's zoned commercial. There is some OR to the west, but everything else there is commercial. And the owner has a single-family dwelling there, and I don't believe they knew that it was commercial. These are some pictures of the areas. These are the current zoning requirements. And these are the proposed zoning requirements. And of course, you've read your staff report, but I went through the items here. I do want to note that Planning District 25 came into effect on November 16th, 1993. Per revenue, the dwelling was built in 1997. It appears that the parcel was zoned B 2 at the time Planning District 25 came into effect. I did go back and look at the master plan, and when zoning came into effect there, that parcel was zoned B 2. I don't know why. Everything else around it was RSF 1. So staff feels that this amendment is consistent with the area and the use. These are our comments from the agencies, and I do want to note for record that we had several comments from subdivision coordinator, ADM, and the Army Corps of Engineers referring to wetlands on the property. So we need to take great care with this property. I believe they're wanting to add an accessory structure, residential accessory structure to the dwelling, so those wetlands will need to be taken into consideration. This is our little chart that tells you the two different zones, and as you can see, there's a... RSF 1 is a far cry from B 2. Staff feels that this is a consistent zone for the area and the use, and recommends approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Bonner. Any questions for staff?
Paula, did the Fort Morgan Civic Association, or the, I'm sorry, the Planning and Zoning Advisory Committee meet on this one?
DJ. Okay, we got no response. DJ said she emailed them the staff report, so we had no response.
So we don't have a recommendation from them?
No, ma'am.
Under agency comments was wildlife and fisheries involved for the beach mouse habitat, and they need to adjust their ITP, I think, right?
That will be addressed when we get to the land use, when we get to the actual permitting process.
So it's not initiated at this point? That's, those comments are not required at this point?
Not at this time. Right now, we're just really looking at the zoning. They will have to apply for site plan approval from Planning and Zoning and a building permit and go through all of the proper permits, the ITP, the... Any ADM Corps, anything like that will be issued at that time.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Bonner.
Thank you.
I had no one signed up to speak. Did I miss anyone? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on this item. I'm going to entertain a motion. Remember, this is also a recommendation to the county commission.
Move that we move this rezoning application forward to the county commission with the staff recommendations noted, as well as the issues related to certain items that may, in fact, be required to address the wetlands issues.
Are you recommending approval?
Yeah. I'm sorry, yes. I recommend approval to the county commission.
Okay. So the motion has been made to recommend approval to county commission with Mr. Boozer. Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stradger, second the motion. Any questions, comments before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. I'm going to look at staff. Matthew, do we need to take action on the S 250 at this point?
Yes, it would be good if we could. This will be a very short presentation. It shouldn't last more than 60 seconds or so.
It's not a public hearing either, is it?
That's right. It's not even a public hearing. In fact, we don't even really need to have a presentation on it because it's not a public hearing. It's simply a one-year extension to a final site plan approval on the basis that they need a little bit more time, and Mary, you can explain that with... And Mary, you can explain that. You don't even need to pull up the presentation, you can just explain the reason.
Good evening. The applicant has requested an extension of the final site plan because they have not completed construction of Phase Two of the development, so they're going to need a little additional time, and the final site plan approval would expire before then, so they're requesting a one-year extension.
Okay. Everybody understand? With that, then I'll entertain a motion. This is an approval of the extension request.
I'll make a motion that we approve the extension for S-20050.
All right, Mr. Mullick's made a motion to approve the extension. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Cybert, second the motion. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, then back to staff again. Any changes? We just want to move into our public hearings on this? Okay. All right. We're going to go back to the beginning of our agenda, and I, as you can guess, since I don't know that anybody other than an applicant spoke tonight, that means all of you are here for these other two items. So we're going to move through these, and please keep this in mind, we have a member that will be leaving shortly, which will put us below the quorum, so we're going to try to move through the public hearing. Both of these have been requested by the applicant to be tabled, but because you are here, we're going, and the request came in late, we're going to go ahead and hear your comments. We may or may not open up for a public hearing next month or when it comes back. If there's more information, we may, it'd be at that time. But you're going to have the opportunity to speak to this project tonight, even though it will be tabled to the next meeting. No decision will be made on it tonight, but we will hear your comments. And this is a request from the applicant that they be tabled on both of these. So we're going to start with Gulf Coast Farms. Does anybody on the Planning Commission need to clear any prior communication on this item? Okay, Ms. Boykin.
All right. This is a request to rezone 39 acres from RA to RSF2. The subject property is located in Planning District 33 and is currently zoned RA, rural agriculture. Is located on the south side of Highway 98 and just east of County Road 91. It's currently vacant. The applicant is asking for RSF2 in order to do a single-family residential subdivision. As you can see on the zoning map, the subject property is zoned RA. To the west, it is zoned RMF6, multifamily. To the east, it is zoned RTF4, which is two-family. To the north, there is some RA, rural agriculture, RSF1, and then some B4, which is major commercial. Most of the adjacent uses are agricultural or residential. Here's a larger zoning map, zoomed out. You can see there's quite a bit of RA in the area. Here is a picture of the subject property and adjacent properties. This is the current zoning requirements, and these are the proposed zoning requirements, which is 15,000 square foot lots. As stated, the subject property is currently zoned RA and is adjacent to RTF4 and RMF6. Planning District 33 map was adopted in August of 2002. At that time, the property was zoned RA. The property to the east was originally zoned two-family, and the property to the west was rezoned in 2005 from RA to RMF6. And here's a copy of the original zoning map. The surrounding land uses, there's some commercial, but mostly residential and agricultural. Most of the development around the intersection of US Highway 98 and 91 is low to medium density residential with a mix of commercial. Staff feels that the RSF2 zoning designation will allow for single-family uses, which would be a transition from the adjacent property in the area. Therefore, staff believes that the proposed amendment is consistent with the development patterns in the area. Here is the join-in property to the west that is zoned RMF6. The average lot is 60 feet by 130, which is 7,800 square feet. To the east of the subject property, where it's zoned RTF4, there's a variety of lot sizes ranging from 7,000 to 28,000 square feet. Here are some comments that we have received. And one of Mary's comments from subdivisions, she stated going from RA to RSF4. The applicant did originally ask for RSF4, but then they came back and changed their mind to go down to RSF2. And here's some comments from Wheezy about the roadways. So they are asking to go from RA to RSF2 to create a single-family subdivision with the transition from RMF6 to RTF4. Staff feels this is a good transition and has recommended approval.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
And just for clarity, staff's recommendation was for approval, but in light of the applicant's request to table, staff's recommendation tonight now will be to ultimately table this for future consideration.
All right, so we will take action on tabling it, but at this point, we will go ahead and have our public comment period. So I will call you. I have about 14 people signed up here, so again, just respect our time and say what you need to say, and let's go through these quickly as possible. We want to hear your comments. So let's, I'll start with Joanne Gorham. Oh, no, Joanne?
That's not me.
Oh, Joanne Gorham. Going once. All right. William.
Moore.
All right, sorry, William Moore.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we appreciate your time and your energies and efforts in regard to addressing the zoning and planning issues of our community. We regret that we have to be here again, as we were here a month ago, dealing with folks that frankly, we in the Lillian community feel like we are under siege. We seem to have developers, out-of-state developers, coming in trying to make a quick buck, don't care much about our community, don't care anything about our infrastructure, don't care how many cars they dump into an already overtaxed highway system. They seem intent on making a bunch of money in a hurry and totally changing the way of life that all of us sought and adopted when we moved to the Lillian community. If I could, it might expedite just a little bit. Everybody here who is opposed to this rezoning, if you'll either stand or raise your hand. Thank you. Just, as you know, y'all have to give up your time every month, every time you have these meetings, and we appreciate that. But when a community has to come together like this over and over and over again, we can't get the same volume of folks all the time, because we're basically a working bunch of folks that have farms, we've got small businesses that we're running, and we just can't get here. But I will tell you that this entire community is opposed to this kind of relatively high-density construction and overloading of our infrastructure. There'll be lots of folks here who have better statistics than I do. Mine, you know, one of the things I saw before we started, your director seems to have a slide, he was talking about the, sort of, the function that you serve, and he suggested that you analyze these as lawyers or as courts do. I'd suggest to you that you analyze these much more like the old courts of equity. And if you give these folks this kind of change in zoning, and they build yet another high-density, just exactly like the one they built on further to the west, right next door to this piece of property, once that gets built, then our community is saddled with them as long as they live, as long as they exist. And so irreparable harm is done when this kind of zoning change is done. We really appreciate y'all's time and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Lacoste, you're for the Sherwood project?
Yes, but I'd like, I would like to say one thing.
Well, let me, we got this fellow here coming up. Let me have him speak. Mr. Gonzalez, go ahead.
Yes, sir. I pretty much agree with the last speaker. The only thing I would like to add is that we're talking about overdeveloping approximately 100 acres of land that's going to negatively affect the property owners around this land, property owners of many thousands of acres of land. So we're sacrificing thousands for 100, and it seems like that the residents of this community that moved here to enjoy a rural community ought to be considered in this decision. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for your time. I was here before on May 5th regarding the other subdivision to the north of 98 and County Road 91. At what point in time are there questions by the staff or someone about the infrastructure, the schools, the fire departments, the emergency services, the sewage, the traffic? When does that ever come up? Do the staff not investigate any of this?
They do.
Or, well, when is it supposed to be presented for approval in that regard?
Tonight, we're just considering the rezoning. They'll have to come back for subdivision approval if the rezoning is approved, and that is when we look into all that stuff. This is just for the rezoning of the property.
Well, when I was here before for the rezoning of '05, I guess C22-05, the exact same question was raised, and there were no answers. And that is going before the commissioners, I believe, on the 19th. So I don't see when this is supposed to be happening.
And let me just clarify one more time real quickly. There are two different types of cases that we generally hear. One is a rezoning case, which just looks at what type of use is allowed on this property. But if they then want to actually carry out that use, they have to submit a subdivision application, which goes through a very intense review, where we check drainage calculations, a traffic study, wetland delineations, that whole gamut. There'll be another public hearing here that looks at all that data, all that will be available online. But they can't even get to that stage without first going through a rezoning stage. So that's, we're at the rezoning stage, which looks at the compatibility and use question at this point.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can support Mr. Brown's comments here, what is before this board tonight is not approving a development itself, it's the zoning classification that the developer is requesting in order to come back to this Planning Commission with an actual development, and that's where the subdivision requirements and the technical standards within the subdivision regulations are applied. So that's where we get the traffic studies, that's where we get the letters of availability from the utility providers and so forth.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to know why this was asked to be tabled? Is there a reason?
I don't know. Staff, Matthew, you know?
The applicant is here and will be, we'll ask him to address that when he comes up.
Do you have that information, please?
Mr. Deal, do you want to come up? I can't see where you're at there. Sorry, Mr. Deal, I probably should have called you at the beginning.
No worries.
But your green paper got lost in all the red here, so.
David Deal with SC Civil. The reason we're asking to table it is we are once again waiting on the completion of a traffic study. They, like everyone else, are covered up, and we fully expected to have it actually a couple weeks ago, but we don't, and we know that's one of the concerns and one of the things that will be looked at by the commission, is the traffic. So we feel like it'd be a better decision to be made once we have that information.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. Deal, you want to speak to this before we go back to the?
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay. All right. Judy Branwich? We'll bring a microphone to you. Oh, he's got one there. Thank you. All right, well, staff mentioned a while ago, that would be something we will do, it's just at another application stage, it's not at this application stage. So we're just looking at, I understand you're making an argument that these are all compatible, that compatibility here is more of a use, it's not related to traffic, drainage, water supply, not at this point. Those are items that will be considered at a later time.
If that, if both of us have to, yeah, if they do five basic questions first.
And we, let me just address this real quickly, and then we do need to move on, so that way everybody has an opportunity to speak. Addressing all those things in great detail is extremely expensive, and so this first stage is just, is a compatibility check. And then, if they get past this stage, then they go to that next stage where they invest those funds to do all this other very intensive technical review, and if they can't meet those technical requirements, then they're not going to get past stage number two as well. So it will be vetted, and it's just part of the process all over the country for these types of developments.
Please understand, the rezoning does not, I'm sorry, Erin, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, for the public hearing of rezoning, anybody that has a comment about what they think the traffic, how it may be affected by this increased rezoning request, or the effect on schools because you have a child in the area or something like that, you're welcome to speak to that, but we're not looking at car counts, we're not looking at, you know, drainage counts and all that kind of stuff, because we don't know what they're going to build here yet. They're just asking for a particular zoning, which has particular requirements and things that can be built. But the public hearing is, any information that you want to provide here with regards to those issues or concerns that you have, that is what this public to those issues or concerns that you have, that is what this public hearing is on the rezoning.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
Okay. Stephanie Barr? Or Barn?
Do you need me to say where my address is?
I'm sorry.
Do you need me to say where my address is? And with, okay, I live on 32813 Bartel Street. Right there. And I was here the last time with my neighbor about the property and our concerns. And even though, yes, we do have concerns about the fact that that area right there is completely saturated and flooded all the time with rain, yes, there is a lot of traffic there. Yes, we don't have the infrastructure for schools and fire department, and we don't even have a police department in that area. We've stated before that it takes 45 minutes just to get any kind of law enforcement out there. The fact that this is saying that it's compatible with the area is just mind-boggling to me because if you look at the screen, all that green is farmland. The only place that is compatible was a subdivision we didn't even want there in the first place. We had no idea it was going in. One night, boom, there it was. And then the subdivision that they proposed to the north, we already came and showed our opposition for that. And I feel like us being here today shows that same opposition, and all of our points were previously made back in May. But it doesn't, it doesn't fit with this area. This right here is all Casabon property, and they've been there for hundreds of years. To the north is my family's property, who have also been there since they came off the boat in Germany. So the fact that they think that that would fit and would be a better fit for this area doesn't make any sense. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. I know you're going to get mad at me, but don't, let's don't applaud anymore. It takes up a lot of time, believe it or not. Matthew, believe me, if you want to speak, I'll give you the time to speak. If we start applauding, I'll just have to close it down, and you won't get to speak. I hate to be that way, but that's what I'm trying to do, is rush through this so that you can speak. Matthew Coughlin?
Matthew Coughlin, 32293 Bartel Street in Alberta. I'll save the majority for my comments since this is being tabled. I do have a question on the whole four to two, and I know they spoke of that. And I'd like to do a public records request on any and all communication between the developer and the county staff with respect to that change from four to two and any reasoning behind that.
Let me just say that there's, the form is online. Go ahead and submit that, and we'll respond.
And that leads into my next statement. So was there ever a traffic study done for Fields Crossing on 98? When it's being built today? That's adjacent to this property?
I'm going to defer to you, Mr. Chairman. If you want to, we can address it later, or I can address this question now?
Address it now.
So these, the Fields Crossing was less than 50 units, and it did not require a traffic study?
But according to the Baldwin County, and I can read it to you. The Baldwin County subdivision regulation. If I can find it. Applicability develop, excuse me?
I hate to cut you off, but if we could keep it to what's before the board right now, which is this, the Gulf Coast Farm property?
Traffic was brought up, and this was tabled due to traffic. Can I speak to traffic?
Well, I just, if it has to do with this one, and we're not here for subdivision requests, I just want to make sure it affects Gulf Coast Farm property so that we know that it relates to this.
So a traffic study wasn't done?
A traffic study was not required.
As required.
We're talking about Gulf Coast Farm?
No, we're talking about Fields Crossing. It's currently being built.
I think I hear where it's going. You need to take that up with Staff at another time. Talk about this project because we need to really move on.
I'm just showing, okay, that's fine. And the other question I have was a traffic study done for the adjacent property on 91 as required. So what's happening here is mistakes are being made, and they're being compounded by more mistakes by not doing traffic studies. And the reason the gentleman wants this tabled because he knows this is coming up, and I hope he does his homework. Because these are your rules and they're state Alabama rules, and we're not following them. These are rules.
Anything else?
These are shall. They say shall. They don't say may. Like in the brief here, it says they may do a traffic study. The requirement is shall. There's a big difference between shall, should, and may. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, David Williams?
I see you smiling. Happy to see me here for the third month in a row, aren't you? Once again, I do appreciate y'all's service to our community. Very much appreciated. Actually, I have sympathy for you because tonight I found out you got to put a puzzle together with all the pieces. Yeah? So good luck with that. I do live to the property to the north of this proposal. And a couple of things, you know, everybody in here, our largest single investment for the most part is our homes and our property. And when you start talking about three subdivisions right here in this area, putting over 300 homes into it, you're infringing upon our investments, the citizens, or as called, the stakeholders. And that's why you see so much opposition to this. Not because we're not, we're opposed to growth. I was here last month, Mr. Pumphreys. You saw me. I come up and spoke for the subdivision that we're putting in at the end of Bartel in 93. I mean, that's, fits right in with, with our community. Six parcels, three 9.5 acres, three 3 acres. This does not fit. And that's why, that's why you see this opposition. That's why you see this concern, just as if you'd moved to an area, bought land, and invested into it, and then this is happening around you. You would probably have the same feelings. So compatibility. According to the staff report, item number three, it says we'll have to do an amendment to our land use map. All right? So that right there shows us not compatible with our land use map that we have in place. Item six states that this would be a transition from current zoning in this area, which is not consistent nor compatible with the development patterns in this area. We talked about the Fields Crossing place, whatever. I'll take my own blame for that. I never saw it coming because if I had, I think you know, I would have been here in opposition, and I would have got as many people as I could. First thing I saw of it was when they started building. So guess what? And I understand what Mr. Coughlin's saying. We just got through saying, we'll do the traffic studies and all this stuff later on after we approve the zoning. That's why I have sympathy for you because you're trying to put together a puzzle without the data. All right? We didn't do a traffic study. The last traffic study on report is 2020. So I understand where he's coming from also. Item 10 states that this does not affect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of this county. I beg to differ with you. Our EMS can't handle it. Our fire department can't handle it. Our sheriff's department can't handle it. Our infrastructure cannot handle it. We discussed that. The public notice says this is RSF 4. All right? So do we got to do a new public notice saying that it's RSF 2 now? Anybody? Yes? No? We put a public notice out saying this is going to RSF 4. Now we show up here and it's RSF 2. We need all the data too, just like you do. You need all the correct data to make your informed decision. In there, somebody said drainage is not an issue. Well, then why is it in the staff comments? It says drainage is already a problem. The building of that subdivision has compounded the problem to the people on Pope Lane. Now we're talking about putting in another subdivision and compounding that again. I'm sure the Pope Lane people will be here to address that, but come on, we got to stop. And look, the Baldwin County master plan. All right? It states, "To maintain our high-quality life, however, it is essential that transportation, economic development, and infrastructure such as high-speed airmen now keep pace and growth with the number of people living and visiting here." By 2022, this is theirs, "By 2222, residents will experience a well-planned set of new and improved roads for local travel. Alleviate traffic congestion and arterials." I've lived here for almost 20 years. Let me tell you about the road improvements I've seen in 20 years in this area. We put a turning lane from the Lillian Chevron down to the post office. We put a turning lane down in front of Brown Helicopter, and we paved Gardner Road. That's, in 20 years, that's what I've seen on our arteries.
You got to wrap it up. Three minutes.
Okay. All right. All right. Yeah, because I'm, I guess we'll be coming back again. But if we don't have a plan, our master plan, in place till it states December of 2022, how are we making these drastic changes? Three subdivisions, this one too, goes from changing our parcel totally in this area. And we really need to consider this. The other thing too, even our own sheriff, Hoss Mack, commented on this. Our overgrowth, we cannot support. We're having more and more calls, and they're not able to support it. We're paying Design Workshop $148,200 to come up with a plan, but we keep making changes along this with our zoning, which how does that affect the plan? You've got to have a plan before you move forward. What we're trying to do is gain 50 pounds or wear the same pants. It don't work. They don't fit. All right? Which is not compatible with you going out public in those things. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration, sir.
Thank you. Leonard. Come on, folks. Leonard Hancock?
Leonard Hancock?
Melvin Whitehurst?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I'm Dr. Melvin Whitehurst. Been in this area for about 80 years now. We live in this Lipton unit down on 98. It's a black community, supposedly, mostly. Nobody really cared anything much about it, but some of us do. We have homes that we've been up for a long time. I'm not opposed to growth. I know it's going to grow, but what my problem is, if it's going to grow, you need to make plans to grow. You need to make plans as far as, it's hard to get out on the highway now. You need to have lice and turning lanes and all this stuff. Need to make plans for that all this way. And then you need to make plans to keep water out of our homes. This last subdivision they put up, about a half a mile from my, not that far, a couple of blocks to my house on the south side, they turned around on the highway there for some reason. And then when they did that, we had water coming up, and it almost got in my house. Like I said, I've been there 80 years, not in that particular house, but we've never had water come up in our houses before. And so we go to talk about, go right in front of my house, and now they want to put another 100 houses out there? And where is that water going to go? My brother-in-law sitting back there, he lived down there on the, right off the hill, I'm counting on the hill. He lived down under the hill. He'll probably just wash it, all this furniture and stuff out of his house. They keep building and making no arrangement for that water to move out of there. So I'm opposed to it. I don't have a whole lot to say, but everybody said just about what I'm thinking about. The young lady says farmland is farmland, like 16 acres there. It's washing away because nobody's making reference to it, is trying to turn that water. It can be done. They can send it on out to the bay. It can be done, but somebody needs to get out and do it before they go to talk about building another 200 or 300 houses in that area. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, listen, I have two more, but I have a planning commission member that has to leave now. So I am going to close the public hearing at this point so that we can take action. And then we'll need to take action on the next one before we have the public hearing. So Dixie Hancock and Robin, I'm not sure the last name. Please write your, if you didn't already, because many of you did send emails in, please do that. And we'll have those before the next meeting when we actually take action. And you're obviously welcome to come back to that meeting. So I'm going to close the public hearing. We need to take action on tabling this item until, are we tabling it until the next meeting? That's the request? So I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Did you do that? Mr.?
Bill.
Oh, Bill did.
Bill did.
Bill made the motion that we table this to the next meeting. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right. Mr. Mullick, seconded the motion. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we're going to do this one in reverse. Is that good, Matthew, to go ahead and table and then have our?
I'm going to let legal counsel comment on that. For the public who's here, that next meeting is going to be Thursday, August 4th. Thursday, August 4th.
Will everybody, will other people speak at that meeting?
So it will be at the discretion of the chairman, and I think the chairman will probably allow those who didn't speak this time to certainly be able to address the commission.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the question that was before me?
All right, so since Mr. Pageant needs to leave, do we need to go ahead and open the public hearing, go ahead and make a motion to table it, and then allow the public that has come to speak after he leaves? So at least we've gotten the motion to table it out of the way?
I just don't think that we can do that because he's going to miss the public hearing part of it, but potentially vote on it the next time. Do you think different? So I think that the best rule of order right now.
Wait a minute, Aaron. Just a moment, folks. We've got a decision on this, I think.
So I think the best way to handle this, under our bylaws and under Robert's rules of order that supplement them, are that we're going to have to have you go ahead and vote on tabling it if that's what the board wishes to do. And then we'll have to table it to the next meeting where we'll have the open meeting on that and allow for public comment during that meeting.
So no public comments tonight?
I'm afraid once we open it and vote on tabling it and then hear public comments, then we may be in a weird position about people voting without potentially hearing.
And just so that way the audience understands what's going on, is we are, we're about to lose a quorum. And under the Robert's rules of order, that triggers certain things that
I just don't think that we can do that, because he's gonna miss the public hearing part of it, but potentially vote on it the next time. Do you think different? So I think that the best rule of order right now.
If you'll, just a moment, folks, we got a decision on this, I think.
So I think the best way to handle this, under our bylaws and under Robert's Rules of Order, that supplement them, or that we're gonna have to to have you go ahead and vote on tabling it, if that's what the board wishes to do, and then we'll have to table it to the next meeting where we'll have the the open meeting on that, and allow for public comment and during that meeting.
So no public comments tonight?
I'm afraid once we open it and vote on tabling it, and then hear public comments, then we may be in a weird position about people voting without potentially hearing.
Okay. And 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 just so that way the audience understands what's going on, is we are, we're about to lose a quorum. And under the Robert's Rules of Order, that triggers certain things that that we would violate Robert's Rules of Order by holding that public hearing potentially without a quorum.
And holding a vote.
And holding a vote without a quorum.
Why would you put all of us off and let those developers come first? We were ahead of them, and you put us to the end. All of us have come tonight, and you put us off. You let those other developers get up and speak one at a time, took a lot more than three minutes. Your staff took a lot more than three minutes, and now you're dismissing.
Okay, I think, hey, hey, we need to have some decorum here. We are doing the best we can to try to fit as many cases and accommodate as many people.
You wanted us at the end. You're just dismissing us.
Look, this.
Folks.
Unfortunately, tonight, we have a volunteer member of our board that has a family thing that he has to go to, and these people live all over this county, and some of them drive an hour and a half or two hours to get here for every meeting. And unfortunately, we have a situation that we're losing the quorum.
Okay. I'm going to. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and make a motion on our last item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we do table this. I would note that a lot of the concerns that have been put forward by the folks here, rightly so, the request was that this item be tabled. So even though we're not giving you an opportunity to speak tonight because of the quorum issue, what you requested, it seems, and particularly online, was to have it tabled for till the next meeting, so you could be better organized. So I think we're meeting your your request in the motion to table.
All right, do we have a? All right, do we have a motion?
Yes, I I am making a motion to table this item for the August meeting.
Okay, that was seconded?
Seconded.
All right. Mr. Buller's made the motion to table it, and Mr. Sibert, second motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I apologize, folks, I really do, but this is not, this is just part of the process that we, with the quorum. We hope, we hope that you will be back. That's what we want you to do. Okay.
This will give everybody time to get organized, like the gentleman. Well, we're, we're, we're here, but we don't have the facts that we need, so we're gonna get them. We'll be meeting outside the door if anybody wants to talk more about it. I'll be out there with Becky and whoever else.
The meeting start at 4:00 P.M.
That's up to staff.
Go ahead and communicate with us.
I hate that. Oh, wow. It'd be a riot.
If you would, we do have to conclude the meeting. If you would, go ahead and make your way out to the front of the building, and we'll conclude the meeting.
Okay. Matthew, do you have anything new business-wise?
No, sir.
Any public comments? That's a dangerous question. All right, staff reports. Matthew?
No staff report, sir.
Legal counsel?
None.
Next meeting's August the 4th. And I'll let you work out the agenda schedule. Anything else, planning commission? All right, we're adjourned.